Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, April 10, 2023. I now call the meeting to order. And I will ask Commissioner Vivar to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. If you'd please stand.
Right, have the rear part ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anna, if we could do a roll call, please?
Chair Erith.
Present.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade is absent. Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
Commissioner Taber.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Anna. There are no announcements or presentations tonight, which brings us to public comments. These are, public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction. I will now open up the public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. Or if you're participating via Zoom, use the raised hand option at the bottom of the screen. And if you're joining the meeting via phone, you can press star nine to unmute yourself. So is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, Anna, anyone online?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, great, thank you. All right, that brings us to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions. And we'll start with Commissioner Rojas.
Okay, well, thank you. Actually, it's not so much a comment, but more of a question. I've been kind of thinking about it because as we are reviewing all these different businesses that we're approving, we always want to be responsible and fair to approving all well-run businesses. And many of our cannabis applicants have been that. But there's a question I just was wondering was, it's funny to me that the question I asked, there is no answer. And compares like, how many do we have? And how many are we going to approve? And what is our left and right limit on that question of the number of dispensaries? So I compared ourselves to our neighbors to the north of Santa Ana, just to see where they are. And see, I noticed that, I realized, Santa Ana currently has a population of 309,000. Costa Mesa has about 110, and proportionally, so three to one, roughly. Santa Ana is 27 square miles. Costa Mesa is 15 square miles. So 50% of that. The number of dispensaries currently active in Santa Ana is 27, with three more pending for a total of 30, with an additional 37 distributors, cultivators, and manufacturers. Costa Mesa has 37 cultivators, manufacturers, distributors, and 18 approved dispensaries at this time. So proportionally, we're already pushing that limit. And I'm just wondering, like, how far do we want to go? And I don't know that we have that answer. So that's, that's an interesting thing because I'd like to ask, and I know some of the city council members watch and the mayor watches, and here's these comments. And this is just a question. I'm not saying this is the number or anything like that. I'm just kind of curious to see what it is. Because I know some of us want to make sure that we, again, encourage the responsible businesses in development and growth. But I'm just curious about that one. I've been wondering, how many are we going to do? Because I'd heard we had 85 applicants, if I remember correctly. I can't imagine we would do all 85. So I'm just kind of curious what we are. And I'm not looking for that answer today. It's just a question I could put out there for us to consider as a city, what we want to do. And that's my comment for today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Mr. Dropkin, perhaps, just to, I guess, weigh in on the conversation. How many applicants do we have left? Not including today.
So we started, we started with about 60 or so, and now we're down to about 40. About 20 of them have CUPs submitted, and the rest of them are on the waiting list or some other category in between.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Director Dropkin, and thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Zick.
About a month ago, maybe a little more than a month ago, I made a request. And I would like to follow up on that request. What I had asked for specifically was to have the spreadsheet that is on the city's website that shows the cannabis application status be either updated, which would be my preference, or removed. Indicated that the date on that status spreadsheet was January of 2022. It's over a year old. So I think I'd like to ask staff to respond to my request now and tell me what is the status with regard to updating this document.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Zick, and I apologize for the delay in that. The list is actively being worked on. We are, staff is working on putting the applicants in order and putting it together in a way that we feel is responsible and putting it on the webpage and with tentative dates. And that's really what the slowdown is, is we're trying to muster up a plan that we can put together on the website that shows these tentative dates for these projects that are upcoming so it can be useful information for not only the public, but the actual, the business applicants as well. So in short, it will be up very shortly. In fact, we expected it to be within the last several weeks, but it, for some reason, it didn't occur. And I don't absolutely know why the delay has happened, but we are still working on the list, and it should be up really, really soon.
Would that be within the next two weeks?
I would say so, yeah. I feel like, I feel like I would have said that three weeks ago as my only concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Taber.
Mr. Dropkin, I was just wondering what non-cannabis-related items are like in the queue that we need to hear? Is there a backlog of non-cannabis? Like, there's the guy that wanted to divide the lot in two with two houses. There's the school that needed the playground. Are there non-cannabis things that are waiting to be heard?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that there's a wait for them, per se. A lot of projects take a lot of time to get up to a point where they can be heard by the Planning Commission. There are some, there are some significant projects that are out there right now that aren't coming to Planning Commission. For example, the Avenue of the Arts Hotel, which is largely modeled out of the zoning administrator, and some other things. We've got some projects, and actually, Chris over here, planner, is working on the Northgate project, which we thought might come tonight, but we're going to move it to another hearing because we needed a little bit more time to sort of, kind of fix it up a bit. We've got some other, you know, council priorities. The council had a priority session, and they definitely prioritize projects over cannabis. And some of the projects included inclusionary housing ordinance, some rezoning along the corridors, obviously. We've got lots of work, you know, out there, but nothing that we're under prioritizing. But at some point, we're going to have to start juggling a little bit more.
So just because we're seeing a lot of cannabis applications doesn't mean that there's other projects that are like backlog for months or anything?
No, I wouldn't say that at all.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Taber, and thank you, Director Dropkin, for weighing in. Commissioner Vivar.
Yes. First of all, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Easter, hope everybody enjoyed the holiday. Second of all, I'm sure that Mr. Yang or somebody from the, sort of, build the cities, building services might, or transportation might be able to talk about the work that's going to be done soon on 19th Street. A very major project in terms of narrowing the lanes there, doing re-striping. There's going to be a signal installed at Wallace and 19th, and that's been, been the works for a while now. So I'm really excited to see that coming soon. And so maybe staff at some point later in the meeting or at the end of the meeting and departmental reports might be able to give us an update on that. And I think it'd be great to be able to know where the, what that project is because I think it's, it's a good project to, to have coming soon to the city as we look to revitalize some of our streets. I also want to, in terms of discussion, speak to Commissioner Rojas's comments earlier. I think he makes very astute observations in terms of the number of retail cannabis applications and sort of touching on, you know, the topic of possible saturation of the market. Because if we look at the city's population, which is 110,000, you know, a certain number of that population are under 21s who are under 18s who aren't able to use that product. And so then the question is, well, how much, you know, how many of a certain type of business that only a certain subsection of the population can, can frequent, you know, are we going to have? And, you know, is that at some point going to get to a point where we have a certain number per square mile or, you know, that starts to become high or a certain corridor? You know, at what point can the, the market not handle, you know, the certain number of retail cannabis establishments? And so I, I do hope that City Council is listening to us tonight and is thinking about these questions too, because I think it's really important, especially as I've mentioned up here from the die, some of those concerns I have regarding possible saturation and, and oversaturation. And in terms of the way that retail businesses of controlled substances go, you know, we all know that when we've seen any kind of liquor establishments up here, you know, the city, the state's alcohol beverage control department has kind of rules regarding how many we can have of that certain kind of establishment per tract map. And so the state does not have something like that for retail cannabis from what I'm aware of. But I think the idea was behind the legislatures, legislators not having made requirement is that they left it up to each municipal government to, to decide. And so, you know, I, I would hope that City Council, again, is listening, as Commissioner Rojas said, and thinking to themselves, you know, well, what is that, you know, responsible number, you know, that we're going to allow per tract map or per area to, you know, make sure that we're not over-concentrating this kind of business? And that we are making sure that we're encouraging business diversity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Vice Chair Toller.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't going to say anything, but since everybody else is talking tonight, I may as well. I'm not going to speak about cannabis, though. I'll talk about housing real quick. In my neighborhood, there is a little bungalow that was built in the 50s that recently flipped. The only reason you could tell is because the landscaping changed outside, but they put in new countertops and floors and probably did a remake inside. It's listed for 1.8, which, which caught my eye, 1.85, because of how low it was, to be honest, because there's, in East Side Costa Mesa, there's a lot that are listed at over two or three even million dollars. I did the math just for fun, and it wasn't very fun. After you write the check for a down payment, a 20% down payment of $375,000, $370,000 for that property, you'd have to pay over $10,000 a month for your mortgage and insurance and taxes. So if you, if, if you need to qualify for this house, this little, it's a four-bedroom, it's a one-story, it's not remarkable, it's just another little, you know, it was built as a working-class house in a working-class neighborhood 70 years ago, you'd have to be making, you'd have to be bringing in about $400,000 a month. So if you and your spouse are making six figures each, you're not even close. And so I just thought I'd share that story. In Costa Mesa, we have to think about our future. We're swapping out. Well, think of who's buying those homes. It's not me. It's not the people that are working in hospitality. It's not our local teachers. It's not the people that make this city the great place that it is. I don't think increasing supply and reducing our, our constraints on housing is a silver bullet, but it's definitely part of the solution. So Costa Mesa is doing things to, to stop restricting supply through zoning. And I encourage us to keep talking about that and keep doing that. It's a good thing. Through, through many means, there's many ways that we can improve this situation. One of them is parking, we talked about a few weeks ago, but there's, there's lots of ways. And I look forward to the discussions we're going to be having over the next few months when we talk about implementing our housing element policies and plans. So that's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. What a heck of a way to start a meeting. It's exciting. Thank you. I will start out by saying happy belated Easter to those of you who celebrate. Hope you had a nice day with family and friends and so forth. I had an opportunity this weekend to attend two events this Saturday. One was the city's Spring Fest, just behind the Donald Dungan Library in West Side. And what an event. It was incredible. I wanted to give a shout out to the Parks Department and staff there for doing such a great job. It rivaled any other event, dare I say, the fish fry, in terms of number of people and are just kids everywhere. It was an incredible experience. So thanks to the city for putting that on. Just before I went there, I was at the Fairview Park Restoration Event with the Fairview Park Alliance. Had a great meeting there, got to pull a bunch of non-native plants out of the sensitive habitat there. So for those of you who are looking for service opportunities, the Fairview Park Alliance does do this regularly. And I believe another group is doing it on the east side of Fairview Park next Saturday, if you're interested. I've been thinking a little bit since our last meeting a couple of weeks ago about some of the comments that were said. And trying to get a grasp of what exactly we do here, or what exactly our role is on the Planning Commission. And I think that there are a couple of different ways of looking at it. One is, our primary role is to make judicial reviews, like we do here, for conditional use permits. Things that are sent to us, we have to make critical judgments. We use the general plan, ordinances, codes, so forth, and make findings to either approve or deny the things that are in front of us. That is our primary role. I would argue, however, that our secondary role is to take into account the wider development initiatives and ideas within this city as promulgated by the City Council and to incorporate that into our decisions. So much so, that if any member of this commission wants to dive into the general plan and see that there is something that needs to be improved upon, it is within our purview to improve it. So I don't tend to look at my position or any of our positions, for that matter, as being very passive. I think that this commission is full of bright minds, every, every last one of you. And we all have differences of opinion, but the purpose is, with time permitting, to continue the conversation, to learn from each other, and to grow. That is the purpose, secondary purpose of why we're up here. The first being judicial review. So, oh, I'm always happy to hear your comments and thoughts, even though they may differ from my own. I think this is just as much a learning experience for me as I hope it is for everyone else here. And I will say that we'll entertain just about anything, provided that it doesn't run us to midnight on these meetings. So with that said, let's go ahead and get to business. So thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar, and we have one consent calendar item tonight as we will be moving on all three of the minutes in our packets. So Commissioners, do you have any comments or suggestions on the minutes? Oh, wait just a second, in case anyone wants to jump in. All right, I have none as well. With that said, may I have a motion? Motion made by, if you want to hit it one more time. Motion made by Vivar, was your motion?
My motion is to approve the meeting minutes for the meetings in July, August, and March of this year as, as is. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second? Second by Toller. Commissioner Vivar, do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, just wanted to thank staff for preparing the minutes. I know that some of those meetings were quite long, so thank you for writing sort of all of our discussions and thoughts in a concise manner for us to approve in the form of minutes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Toller, do you wish to speak?
No.
All right, so with that, Anna, roll call vote, please.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Andrade absent.
All right, thank you very much. This brings us to our public hearing period of the meeting. We have three public hearings tonight. And Anna, if you'd do us the favor of reading the first title, I'd much appreciate it.
Public hearing item number one, planning application 22-42 for a cannabis non-storefront retail business, A&amp;D Carriers, located at 2706 Harbor Boulevard, Suite 208. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any expertise communications.
Thank you, Anna. Starting with Commissioner Rojas, any expertise?
I have none, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Zick. Vice Chair Toller.
No.
Commissioner Vivar.
No.
And Commissioner Taber.
No.
And I have none as well. So I'll now turn it over to Ms. Nguyen to present the item, or, yes, Ms. Nguyen? Okay, that's okay. Yes, sir, please.
Good evening, Chair Erith and Commissioners. I'm Christopher Aldana, Assistant Planner with the Economic Development Service Department. This request is for a conditional use permit for the establishment and operation of a cannabis non-storefront retail facility within an existing 744-square-foot tenant space located at 2706 Harbor Boulevard, Suite 208. The proposed business name is A&amp;D Carriers. The property is owned Local Business District C1. The applicant has applied for applicable state licenses, and the project incorporates Measure Q. The required state license for the proposed cannabis business includes Type 9 Non-Storefront Retailer. Type 9 Non-Storefront Retailer Delivery Only does not have a storefront and sells cannabis goods to consumers only through delivery. Only packaged cannabis products can be delivered directly to customers. One of the three owners would conduct the deliveries using their personal vehicles, and no vehicles will be parked on-site overnight. In November of 2018, non-medical adult-use cannabis became legal in California under Prop 64. In 2020, voters approved Measure Q to allow retail cannabis uses in the city. In June of 2021, City Council adopted ordinances to amend Titles 9 and 13 of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, establishing regulations for legal cannabis retail uses, including non-storefront delivery only. The applicant has completed the initial steps of the cannabis business application process, which include the pre-application. A pre-application review is required for any proposed cannabis retail storefront or for any non-retail cannabis use. The cannabis business permit is a multi-step process, which includes the collection and review of vital documents. Next is the notice to proceed to apply for a conditional use permit. Once all the documents have been approved by the city and all owners have passed background checks, the city issues the NTP. Then the applicant would apply for the conditional use permit. If the CUP is approved tonight, the applicant would continue on to the remaining steps, including issuance of a CBP and obtaining a business license. As mentioned, the project site is located at 2706 Harbor Boulevard, Suite 208, and a commercially zoned property. The 41,500-square-foot property has, has existing onsite improvements, which consist of landscaping, off-street parking, and trash enclosures. The shopping center consists of a mix of uses that include retail, restaurants, and professional services. Here is a site photo, which shows the current condition of the building. The building was constructed around 1972 and is currently occupied by a variety of uses. In general, the project consists of a limited tenant improvement, and there are no proposed modifications to the exterior of the building or additional square footage. The proposed location of the business is on the second floor and is shaded in red on the site plan. The suite is located directly above Total Relax Massage, Suite B, and shares a common ground floor entrance with direct access from the adjacent westerly parking area. Additionally, the suite has one entry door located on the second floor and is accessible from the ground level via an exterior stair entrance. The stairway is also shared by businesses operating on the second floor. The proposed loading and unloading area is highlighted yellow and is approximately 70 linear feet from the entrance of the building. The proposed floor plan includes one main area, which consists of non-storefront delivery. The remainder of the building would be dedicated toward, would be dedicated for a lobby, an office, and for storage. The facility has one entrance and entrance/exit for licensed vendors and employees only. The entrance/exit is located to the east of the suite. Highlighted in orange is the 245-square-foot delivery area. As proposed and conditioned, video surveillance cameras would be installed on the interior and exterior of the building with direct views of the loading and unloading area. As conditioned in the resolution, cannabis products will be transported securely from the licensed premise to the delivery vehicles, and the delivery vehicles will also be equipped with secure storages, secure storage areas for cannabis products. The applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, which is not attached to this staff report since it contains proprietary details. However, the business plan describes the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization, pro forma, and day-to-day operations. The applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan, which was reviewed by Costa Mesa's cannabis consultant, HDL, who determined that appropriate security measures were included to address city and state requirements. Included into the CUP are more than 45 standard conditions of approval related to Measure Q. For example, onsite consumption is prohibited, there are age restrictions for employees and for customers, compliance with state regulations, and requirements for CBP renewal. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. This concludes the presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Aldana, thank you so much, and sorry for the mix-up earlier. That was my fault.
No worries.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this item, starting with Commissioner Taber? Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Aldana. So did, I understand you correctly, you said that one of the owners would be doing deliveries in their own vehicle, correct?
Well, all three would do the background checks and be approved for deliveries, but all three are owners.
Okay, because the staff report mentioned something about Okay, because the staff report mentioned something about two vehicles being used for delivery.
Correct. So the applicant proposes that at no given time, more than two of the owners would be on-site, because one of the owners who is qualified to do the deliveries is actually one of the daughters who's a partner. But that individual actually has a full-time job, and so they would be helping out periodically, but they would not be there most of the time.
Right, okay. And then so I guess what I'm gathering from this is that at least one of the three owners would be on-site at all times, correct?
Absolutely. And as the business grows, there is a possibility that in the future, individuals would be hired and go through the proper routes to become delivery drivers. But because it is, it's a small, you know, just a mom and her daughter's business, you know, they're starting off small, and so those are the three individuals who would start off doing the deliveries.
Right, okay. And I do have one more question. So I think this is the first time, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is the first time we've seen a delivery-only retail cannabis establishment. And I think we've also seen in sort of a Measure Q and one in the commercial zone, I believe we've also seen other ones in the Measure X zone that also do delivery only to consumers. Is there a difference between a cannabis business delivery only that's in a commercial zone versus a Measure X zone?
Sure. So in the Measure X zone, they're permitted to do distribution and manufacturing, and most of those projects are already established or are being introduced, and they can also have the element of non-storefront delivery. But in this case, this project falls within the Measure Q, which came after the Measure X ordinance, and it allows for these non-storefront, more discreet, you know, retail, non-storefront, delivery businesses to be located within particular commercial areas. In this case, it's the C1 area. And so that would be the main difference, is that where in the Measure X, you're allowed all three uses. In this Measure Q area, well, it's not generally an area, but it's in the commercial zones, they're allowed only the non-storefront retail delivery.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Rojas. Vice Chair. All right, goes to me. So, Mr. Aldana, if you would, the resolution for operational conditions 1 and 2 say that there is no distribution from 12:00 to 5:00 a.m., and in the second operational condition, it says delivery limited between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Why is there, I mean, not a seamless transition between when there can be delivery and when there's not? Or, I don't know if I'm, what the difference is between distribution, if that's product being dropped off one hour before delivery can take place from the retail arm of the business. Is that correct?
So to clarify, the first clause, the no-product distribution shall occur between 12:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., that's because this location is only applying for a non-storefront retail, so they do not have their own distribution license. They would have to hire a third-party to do the distribution. So those deliveries that would occur would only be conducted during the hours, or actually, they would be prohibited to be conducted between the hours of 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. And then the second clause, that's for retail delivery. So the second clause reads, "Delivery to customers is limited to the hours between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m." So those are the proposed hours of delivery. So one is in, the first one's in regards to the third-party distribution, and the second one is in regards to their own delivery service.
Okay. And I was trying to think, up until tonight, because I know we have another item that reads like this as well later on, I'm not, I don't recall that we've seen one that's quite like this before, where there's that one-hour, or actually, two-hour gap between, you know, 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. Like, what happens there? Nothing?
Yeah, that is a standard condition for distribution. It's one of those scenarios where we think that this is, this site is going to more or less rely on distribution. It's not very large. It's not like it's a retail area where it has a large back-of-house area. It's mostly just there.
Okay.
So, yeah, it could be probably worded a little bit better to sort of more correlate with distribution from deliveries, from the potential delivery to the site. I think I'll change that for the next one. And like you said, this is the first, and Commissioner Vivar mentioned appropriately, this is the first one that I recall that we did from a retail location from a Q-only. But for the most part, it is exactly the same as what we have in the X sites, and including the non-security requirement as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Director Drapkin and Mr. Aldana. I think one more general question. I must have missed this. Were there any site improvements planned?
The building is actually in great shape. If you like, I can go back to the original slide.
Yeah, and I just, I think typically we see things like improved landscape or procure parking off-site. I didn't, I didn't recall seeing any site improvements in this item.
Yeah, so the facade of the building is in great shape. There's existing landscape. If you drive by, it's in great condition. You know, the striping's still visible. So for this particular case, not to say that in the future, different applicants may not have those conditions of approval, but for this particular applicant, it wasn't necessary, considering it's only the interior remodel.
Yeah, and I do recall it being a pretty nice site. My mom and I used to go to Coco's around there pretty often until they shut down. So, all right, that's it for me. Commissioners, unless you have any other questions, move it along. Okay. I will now open up the public hearing and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come up. And if you would, please state your name. Let us know if you've read the staff report and if you agree to the conditions of approval, please. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, I've read the staff report, and my name's Annie Santillan.
All right. Thank you. If you'd like to make a presentation, you're certainly more than welcome to.
I would. First, I want to say thank you for having me and my family here. I just wanted to introduce myself again. I'm Annie Santillan. I have my daughters Nicole Vargas Sanchez and Brittany Santillan here with me. I'm a mother, a daughter, and a grandmother, and a businesswoman. I just want to give you guys a little story on who I am and my visions for A&amp;D Carriers, and then what the name of the company stands for. It stands for Annie and Daughters. We are 100% all-woman-owned and operated company. Our goals are to thrive in an industry which is predominantly male-owned. How we plan to do this is simple. We plan on teaching and giving our employees knowledge about the industry, giving them skills and tools to be successful, bringing equity, equality, and inclusion at our company. We will create a culture and environment which makes our employees feel valued, heard, and safe by creating a circle of safety, a family. We will create jobs anywhere from, well, obviously from us three and potentially more as our company grows. I have 10 years-plus of experience as being a businesswoman. My daughter Nicole has over eight years of experience in transportation and dispatching. She oversees 65 employees. My daughter Brittany brings a strong management skill level. My promise to Costa Mesa is to become a successful businesswoman in this community, to create a family outside of my family, to make my employees feel a part of this company. We will motivate and inspire them to dream and put actions behind their dreams. This dream is not just my dream, it's my legacy for my family. I want people to see if I can do it, they can do it. I promise to work hard and teach our employees that hard work and perseverance pays off, and never to give up on their dreams. Thank you for your time and your opportunity to be here.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Santillan. If you, if you wouldn't mind just staying up here, I'll open it up to the commission to see if they have any questions. Mr. Zick.
Ms. Santillan, thank you for coming tonight. I do have a couple of questions for you.
Of course.
As you're probably aware, there are a number of cannabis retail delivery businesses in the city, whether they have storefronts in addition to that or not. What do you see your business as competitive advantage?
Well, I know that I'm going to work extra hard. I'm going to learn more about the industry. I have family and friends that are in the industry. I'm just going to offer a better service.
Okay. And then how is it that you intend, or what, do you have a plan for customer acquisition and marketing, and if so, what is that?
Well, we're obviously going to use weed maps and maybe other marketing, like social media and other companies that will help us get our name out there, and of course, build our CRM management to have more customers in our system. That's what we have in our plan right now.
Okay. And my last question for you. Have you had any discussions with the landlord about the condition of the parking lot in front of the property? It's in miserable shape, and it's not even clean.
The parking lot?
Correct. I know that's not your responsibility. My question is, have you had any discussions with the property owner?
No, not regarding the cleanliness of the parking facility. It does seem to be getting better, though. They're bringing more tenants in, not in our actual building, but next door, so it seems like it's getting better. It's not as, I mean, I didn't, never considered it filthy.
Oh, it's, okay. Take another look next time you're out there.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Commissioner Vivar, it looks like.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. And I just have one quick question, as some of myself and the Chair Erath alluded to tonight. This is the first Measure Q, delivery-only non-storefront business that comes to us for review. So I was just wondering what the, I guess, what made you decide on going delivery-only rather than delivery and storefront?
A lot of it has to do with, we didn't have capital to go and fund a storefront, a retail storefront. It takes a lot more planning, more money, architects, landscaping. I couldn't do that right now, but eventually I plan to.
Right. So would you see yourself eventually expanding into retail within this unit or elsewhere in the city?
Perhaps not in this unit, but somewhere I plan on. I'm going to keep dreaming big, so I plan on opening up a storefront eventually. I don't know. I hope it will be here. If it's not, then I will definitely find another location, but ideally, it would be here.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much, and that's it for you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Ms. Santillan, I think I'll just make a brief comment. I don't have any questions for you, but we're obviously going to come to a vote later, but I will say now that I really do admire women-owned businesses. My mom, who's actually, believe it or not, sitting right there, she was a woman-business owner as well, in a male-dominated world. And, yeah, wish you very, you know, good luck.
Thank you.
Because I saw it, I saw it growing up.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, sure thing. And that's all for me. You're welcome to have a seat if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open up this to public comments. So if you'd like to speak to this item, please approach the podium here at the front. And if on Zoom, please use the raise hand option. If you're joining the meeting on your phone and like to speak, please press star nine. So we'll start out in chambers here. Start out with you, sir.
How you doing, guys?
Yes, sir.
David Dwyke, owner of SCSA in Santa Ana, probably one of the most successful dispensaries in Orange County. I've known Annie for quite a while. I've worked with her extensively. I believe that she is more than qualified to run a successful delivery business. And being a woman operator, a family-owned woman operator, I think she brings something to the city that we need here in Costa Mesa. I'm very proud of her. She's a hard worker, and she's not going to disappoint you guys at all. I believe that she'll probably be one of the top tax revenue generators for delivery in the city. I also wanted to bring up something you said earlier, that most of our sales in Santa Ana, about 7% come from actually from Santa Ana. The rest of them are outside of Santa Ana, the sales. So I can see Annie doing sales in other cities as well, not just Costa Mesa. She'll be selling Huntington Beach, Irvine, and so on and so on. So she's going to generate that revenue for the city that's outside the city as well, being a delivery service. I think that, I think she's going to do an awesome job, and I'm very proud of her. That's about all I have to say. Thanks for the time, guys.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dwyke, and thank you for your letter as part of our package as well. We received that. Any other speakers in chambers? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Zoom.
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Telephone?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We will move this on. I'm going to close public comment portion of the public hearing, and I'll ask commissioners if you have any further questions for the applicant or staff. All right. Yes, Commissioner Vivar. I see you're, okay. All right. And I have none. And Ms. Santillan, would you like to make any final comments or closing comments? It's up to you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Again, seeing none. Okay. I'll now close the public hearing and entertain a motion. I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll make the motion to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, Per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and approved planning application 22-42, subject to the conditions of approval contained in the resolution. Is there a second? Seconded by Vivar. I don't think I need to speak to the motion. Would the second like to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Ms. Annie for her presentation tonight. I think this is, many of the operators that come before us say that they're small operators, family-owned, yet I see a pretty massive sort of business infrastructure behind them. This is, to me, what a small business, family business is, is a parent with their children operating a business. So I think that this proposed business as well is well-suited to the, to the building in which they want to operate, that has similar uses, kind of office-type uses. So I think in the terms of the compatibility with the neighborhood and area, I think it's very well-suited. I think this is a great application, and, and as well, I oftentimes harp up here about business displacement, and so this business seems to just coming in to take an empty unit, which is great, which is what we, you know, we should encourage in our city, have more businesses to come and occupy existing vacant units without displacing other people. And so, great application, and I wish you luck.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. And on second thought, I'll actually circle back to make a comment. Ms. Santillan, I think very highly of small businesses, particularly in this city. And as I mentioned just a minute ago, I come from a family of small business owners. My mom, a trade show producer. My dad, a general contractor. And the entrepreneurial spirit is very strong in my family, and I always look forward to hearing of people that want to roll the dice, take a chance, and go for it. So I'm happy to support, support this item as spoken in the original motion. So with that said, commissioners, do you have any other comments? All right. Seeing none. Anna, roll call vote, please.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Andrade absent.
All right. Thank you very much, Anna. Please. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, Ms. Santillan. Welcome to Costa Mesa. All right. Before we get into item number two, let's go ahead and take a brief five-minute break, please. All right. Before we get into item number two, let's go ahead and take a brief five-minute break, please. Thank you. All right. Welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting for April 10th, 2023. I call the meeting back to order. And Anna, if you'd please read the title for public hearing item number two, please.
Public Hearing Item Number Two: Planning Application 22-27 for Retail Cannabis Non-Storefront and Cannabis Distribution Facility Located at 3505 Cadillac Avenue, Unit 0209A, AK Exclusives. Please note, we have not received any public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right. Thank you very much, Anna. Ex parte communications, starting with Commissioner Taber. Commissioner Vivar?
No.
Commissioner Rojas?
None.
Commissioner Zick, Vice Chair?
Nope.
And I have none to report as well. So I'll now turn it over to Mr. Bill Lobos. If you'd like to present, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Gabriel Villalobos and I am an Assistant Planner with the Development Services Department. Tonight, I'm presenting Planning Application 22-27, which is a request for conditional use permit to establish a new cannabis distribution and non-storefront retail business within the Green Zone area of the city of Costa Mesa. The proposed uses will require a state license Type 9 for the home deliveries and a Type 11 license for the distributor use. The proposed business name is AK Exclusives. The applicant has successfully completed the initial application steps of the entitlement process for a new cannabis business in the city of Costa Mesa. If the application, if, excuse me, if the CUP application is to be approved tonight, the applicant must next go through the building permit approval and inspections phase prior to the issuance of a cannabis business permit and city business license. Only afterwards will the cannabis business be allowed to operate. The project site is located at 3505 Cadillac Avenue, Unit 0-209A, which is highlighted on the exhibit shown in the slide above. The subject property is zoned PDI, or planned development industrial, and is surrounded by other similarly zoned properties in a predominantly industrial area. Existing development on the property includes several industrial office buildings located on a roughly 14-acre property. The project site is located on the second floor of Building O within Suite 209. The second-floor suite is approximately 2,178 square feet with 877 square feet dedicated exclusively for the proposed cannabis business and roughly 843 square feet of office space dedicated to a separate tenant, with the remainder consisting of common area, including a shared hallway, restrooms, and storage. Unit 0-209B is used as a part-time office space for a freight planning business. And there are currently six other cannabis businesses operating specifically in Building O. Shown on the slide above are some of the existing conditions of the project site taken during my site visit on October 5th. Photo number one shows the entrance to Unit 0-209. Photo number two shows the common area and shared hallway for both 209A and B. Photo three shows the lobby area of the proposed cannabis business. Photo four shows the entrances to both licensed areas. Photo five shows a different angle of the office space for the proposed cannabis business. And photo six shows proximity from the entrance to the parking lot. The applicant would be obtaining a Type 9 home delivery license and Type 11 distribution license from the state that would allow for the storage and distribution of cannabis and cannabis products between licensed retailers, cultivators, and manufacturers. The project scope of work is focused on establishing a licensed premises for both distribution and home delivery in a secured space that meets all requirements as set forth by the city and state. There will be minor tenant improvements made to the premises, which includes the installation of security features such as cameras, locks, and storage for the new cannabis facility. Odor control measures will also be implemented in the form of freestanding plug-in carbon air filters for both the home delivery and distribution rooms. The odor control features will not be connected to the existing HVAC system in the suite. No exterior modifications other than exterior security cameras covering the path of travel to the parking area will be included as part of the scope of work for this project. The applicant's business plan and security plan were successfully evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, HDL. The owner and operator has passed the required background checks. And as a note to the commissioners, all employees will also be required to pass a background check. Shown here is the site plan for the project. As previously mentioned, the site is composed of several multi-tenant industrial buildings. The building in which the project is to be located is one developed to accommodate industrial and office uses and currently includes six separate cannabis facilities in Units 101, 201, 102, 106, 107, and 108. Landscaping, surface parking, and attraction closure are all existing. And the path of travel from the front entrance to the designated parking area will be all under camera. Unit 0-209 is broken down into three primary areas. The area in red, the area in red contains the office space as well as the exclusive restroom and storage space that are part of the licensed premise. These areas are all limited access and are intended to only be accessed by employees of the proposed cannabis business. The area in green is roughly 171 square feet of non-storefront retail licensed area that will include storage for products for home deliveries. The area in blue is roughly 165 square feet and is the designated distribution room, which will house the products intended for distribution to other cannabis businesses only and not for home deliveries. Each of these areas are limited access and secured with magnetic locks requiring key fobs for access. The areas in gray and white are the adjacent tenant space sharing Unit 0-209 and the hallway providing common access to both tenant spaces, which is not considered a limited-access area. Shown above is a flow diagram exhibit showing the path of travel in and out of the proposed cannabis facility for both home deliveries, which are shown in red, and distribution, which are shown in blue. All products brought into and out of the facility will be pre-designated as either home delivery finished products or bulk finished products for distribution to other licensed facilities. Incoming shipments from third-party distributors will be pre-scheduled and shall be escorted by employees and brought into the front office area within the secured facility from the designated parking area in a locked container. The facility is limited access and is not open to the public. And as such, the distribution and home delivery rooms will be off-access for anyone other than employees of the proposed business. The next couple of slides will provide some examples of the conditions of approval that are recommended in the draft resolution that are applicable to cannabis-related projects. This slide provides examples of general conditions of approval, including the ability to revoke the approved entitlement, the requirement to renew the cannabis business permit every two years, the process for reviewing and approving any changes in operation, the process for modifying the cannabis business permit with changes in ownership of at least 51%, establishing record-keeping and tax remittance to the city, and submitting to the city auditing and no notice inspections. Conditions of approval have also been included that are related to the ongoing operation of the use, including a background check, an issuance of ID badges for all employees, quarterly employee roster and vehicle list updates, vehicle loading/unloading required to be within camera view, no cannabis products or cannabis graphics to be visible from the exterior, cannabis waste made unusable and disposed of at an appropriate facility, and maintaining air quality/odor control devices in addition to establishing distribution and home delivery hours. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, per SEQA Guidelines, Sections 15301, and to approve Planning Application 22-27, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villalobos. Really appreciate it. That was a great presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff on this item? Starting with Commissioner Rojas, Commissioner Zick, Vice Chair?
Nope.
Commissioner Vivar, Commissioner Taber? All right. And I have none as well. Which means I will now move this on to the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up. If he or she is here. Yes, sir. And on your way up, I'll ask you to, when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and let us know if you have read the staff report and the conditions of approval. And do you agree to them?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Amin Khan. I'm the applicant. I have read the staff report and I do agree to the conditions of approval.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Khan. You're welcome to make a presentation if you'd like.
Sure. I don't really have too much of a presentation, maybe just a few words I could say. So I'm the founder and CEO of AK Exclusives. We currently do business actually in the Bay Area. That's where our original facility is. We cover pretty much the whole Bay Area for home delivery. We also distribute our brand of products to about 50 or so retailers across the state. I've been in the cannabis business for over a decade. I have a background in finance. I graduated from San Francisco State with a finance degree and decided to pursue the cannabis business full-time. We bootstrapped our first facility in the Bay Area. I was the first and only employee. Now we have a great crew of almost 20 employees over there, a fleet of vehicles and a big passion for cannabis. And we just thank you for your time and really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Khan. I'm trying to think, San Francisco State Golden Gators? Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Just had to get that straight. All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant, starting with Commissioner Zick?
Mr. Khan, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Do you have an idea yet what your expected revenues are going to be for your retail delivery versus your distribution?
Yeah, so we're anticipating $450,000 for retail delivery and about $400,000 or so thousand for the distribution component.
About 50/50, huh?
Just about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Taber? Commissioner Vivar? Vice Chair? No one? Okay. Nor do I. So thank you, Mr. Khan. You're welcome to take a seat. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll now open the public comment period of the meeting. If you'd like to speak to this item, please approach the front. And if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand option. Or if you're joining the meeting on your phone and like to speak, please press star nine. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak? All right. Seeing none. Anna, if we could go on to Zoom?
Hank Castanetti, you may provide your public comment.
Mr. Castanetti, welcome. You're welcome to unmute Hank. He's unmuted. Hank, if you're out there in the interweb, you're welcome to speak if you'd like. We can't hear you.
He took his hand down.
Oh, he did. Okay. All right. Thanks. Is there anyone else, Anna?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
On Zoom or phone?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Last call for Hank Castanetti if he'd like to speak. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Anna. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. I don't as well. Mr. Khan, do you have any closing comments you'd like to make? It's up to you. Okay, all right. That was a no. All right. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? All right, seeing none. I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Motion made by Vice Chair Toller. What was your motion, Vice Chair?
I I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA and approve Planning Application 2227 subject to conditions of approval contained in the resolution.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Toller, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I don't have much to say. I wish your business the best, and I'm glad you found a place in Costa Mesa for it. That's all.
Commissioner Rojas.
Saying just good luck to you, sir, and nothing else.
All right. And other Commissioners, do you wish to make comments? Commissioner Tabor? Commissioner Vivar? Commissioner Zick? And I have no comments as well, other than to say I am supporting the motion and I guess go Golden Gators. So with that said, Anna, roll call vote, please.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Andrade absent.
All right, thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, Mr. Khan. Thank you. All right, and lastly, Anna, if you'd please read the title for public hearing item number three. That would be great.
Public hearing item number three, Planning Application 21-38 for retail cannabis storefront business located at 2424 Newport Boulevard, Unit C and F, Gaia Wellness. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Right, thank you, Anna. Ex parte communications, Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Tabor? Commissioner Vivar? Commissioner Rojas?
None.
Commissioner Zick? Vice Chair? I do have a couple to mention. I was made aware of this item before it was agendized about two weeks ago in a discussion I had with Mr. Maddox about another item that we were hearing. There was no substantive discussion on the nature or the particulars of this item, other than to say that it was coming up. I didn't, I don't even think I knew the address, but I did speak to Mr. Maddox at that point. I received a call and a text from Mr. Andy Singh today, to which I responded saying, "We'll see you tonight," something to that effect. And then I also said hello to Mr. Singh during the five-minute break earlier. That's about it for my ex parte. So with that said, I will now turn it over to Ms. Halligan to present the item. Ms. Halligan.
Good evening, Chair Erith and Commissioners. I'm Michelle Halligan, contract planner with the Economic Development Services Department. Planning Application 21-38 is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a retail cannabis storefront that would be known as Gaia Wellness. Delivery to consumers is not proposed from this location. To date, the city has approved 18 COPs for retail cannabis storefronts. The approved COPs are shown here in green. The project being presented tonight is in blue. The applicant successfully completed the initial steps, including a pre-application and cannabis business permit application prior to submitting the COP application. If the COP is approved tonight, the applicant would next apply for building permits before moving on to a business license and CBP. The proposed storefront would be located at 2424 Newport Boulevard in Units C and F. The subject property is Zone C1, which is the local business district commercial zone. There are C1 properties to the north and south. Residentially zoned properties are located to the east. Existing development on the property includes a 4,967-square-foot multi-tenant commercial building, as well as an approximately 2,000-square-foot residential building containing five units. Historic records show that the residential structure was constructed in 1936. The Orange County Board of Supervisors approved the addition of a commercial structure on the property in 1946. The two structures are approximately 95 feet apart. Residential and commercial uses have operated simultaneously on this property since the late 1940s. Here are some photos of the property. The residential use and several aspects of the existing development are legal non-conforming. The multi-tenant commercial building fronts Newport Boulevard. The residential building is located in the rear. A parking lot separates the two structures. The proposed storefront would be located in two tenant spaces that are currently vacant. The previous tenant of Unit C, which fronts Newport Boulevard, was a massage business. The previous tenant in Unit F, which fronts the residences, was a dog grooming business. The proposed plan would restripe the parking lot to meet current standards and add landscaping. When using a four-per-1,000 retail standard for that entire commercial building, typically 20 stalls would be required. But based on city records, the site has been approved to have 17 parking stalls, of which five are dedicated to residential use. The applicant proposes to provide a total of 26 parking stalls by obtaining off-site parking from next door at 2428 Newport Boulevard. The off-site parking is outlined in red. Both properties share one driveway from Newport Boulevard, as well as a drive aisle. If approved, wayfinding signs would be required to identify which off-site parking stalls are dedicated to 2424 Newport use. In terms of exterior improvements, parking would be removed from the front setback, except for one accessible stall. Landscaping would be added to the front setback, including at least one 24-inch box-sized tree along the public right-of-way and living ground color, cover. Additional landscaping would be added along parking in the rear. If the COP is approved, a detailed landscaping plan and photometric plan will be reviewed during plan check. The location of a bike rack would also be finalized during plan check. The proposed floor plan includes two major areas, the retail sales area and back of house. The retail sales area is shown in green. It includes a lobby, check-in desk, and the sales floor. The remainder of the building would be dedicated to back-of-the-house use, shown in red. This area is access-controlled, meaning only employees with adequate security clearance can be located in that part of the building. Vendors would only be able to distribute products well-accompanied by an employee with security clearance. All product loading and unloading would take place under video surveillance. The applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. It is not attached to the staff report as it contains proprietary details. The business plan describes the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization, pro forma, and day-to-day operations. The applicant also provided a detailed security plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. It is not attached to the staff report as well. The Costa Mesa's security consultant determined that the appropriate measures were included to address city and state requirements. There are more than 50 standard conditions of approval for Measure X uses in Costa Mesa. For example, a security guard must be on-site at all times, even when the business is closed. On-site consumption is prohibited. There are age restrictions for customers and employees. And there is a renewal process for a cannabis business permit every two years. Since the subject property includes five existing residences and a butts of residentially-zoned property, several conditions of approval have been included to ensure compatibility, such as requiring a photometric study to minimize light spill to the on-site and off-site residential buildings, posting signs related to using consideration of neighbors in the parking lot, and signs related to finding off-site parking next door, as well as limiting the hours that waste can be exposed of in the exterior trash enclosure. And an additional employee would monitor the parking lot. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find the project categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per SEQA Guideline Sections 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities, and approve Planning Application 21-38 subject to conditions of approval and code requirements. The applicant has also prepared a presentation. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer your questions.
Right, Ms. Halligan, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner Rojas?
I do. I just want to understand the mix there of the residential area worth of the building itself. I wanted to drive the site, but I just unfortunately didn't have enough time to do it. But are you able to shed any light on that of how it works or what the layout is? I was looking at the maps and the images, and I really didn't understand that part. If you could help me understand that, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Rojas. So this site has historically been mixed-use, even though this zone doesn't currently allow mixed-use, so it's legal non-conforming. But the residential structure in the rear was constructed back in 1936. There isn't a physical separation such as a fence or a wall, but there is a, you know, a series of parking stalls in between the two uses. It's about 95 feet from the rear of that commercial building to the front of the residential one.
And it's one unit then? That one, because I was looking at it, trying to see through the map, and I see it just seems to be one home or one unit?
So it's actually five individual units. They are one-bedroom apartments.
Okay, all housed in the same building.
All in the same building.
Understood. I was just trying to figure that one out. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Zick?
Ms. Halligan, the letters of support from each of the five residential occupants, did you receive these directly from them or from the applicant?
Commissioner Zick, I received them from the applicant as supplemental information, and the applicant is available to speak to those letters.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Halligan, for another great presentation. And so regarding the residential structure there being, having been constructed in 1936, that predates the, sort of the incorporation of the city of Costa Mesa. So was that residential structure there before zoning happened, basically?
Commissioner Vivar, the residential structure was approved in the '30s, and about 10 years later, the county approved the commercial use in the front. At that time, I do not know what the zoning was. It was unincorporated Orange County.
Okay. So regarding wayfinding signs for the parking, would that basically mean that there's going to be like signs on poles in front of the parking spaces saying this is for the, you know, retail cannabis storefront? Or what kind of wayfinding signs are we talking about here?
Commissioner Vivar, the final design of the signs and the text would be approved by the director. Typically, though, you would see wayfinding signs in the parking lot of 2424 to make sure that employees know to go to 2428 to park in the rear. Their vision is primarily to have employees parking in that location.
Okay. And then so the residential parking that's also in the rear, is that correct?
The residential parking is immediately in front of those units. They have five reserved spaces, and we have historic records showing that the five spaces are legal non-conforming and that those would continue to be reserved for residential use. There is a sign in front of those five spaces.
Okay, great. And my final question is, so you mentioned in the presentation and in the staff report that Units C and F were occupied. One was by a massage business, I believe, and I can't remember what the other use was. But how recently were those two businesses operating?
Commissioner Vivar, I believe the dog grooming vacated at least a year ago, but I don't have the exact dates. I did speak with the operator, and she had relocated to Newport Beach, but not far from Costa Mesa. The massage business, I do not know when they vacated.
Yeah, because I visited the site and I couldn't tell if it was operating or not because their signage was still up and everything, so I had a really hard time. So, but we don't know when that was, that business was last active then, is what you're saying?
That is correct. I do not have a date of vacation.
Do you think it's possibly within the last three years?
Within the last three years, it does appear so.
Okay.
I did check Yelp.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Any other Commissioners?
All right, Ms. Halligan, for the sake of conversation, I noted that staff designated this as commercial residential. And I was wondering if there were any associated restrictions with commercial residential vis-à-vis an item that we heard rather recently that was commercial limited. So maybe you can explain some of the practical differences between the two.
Thank you, Chair. Commercial limited is a zoning district that's intended to allow commercial uses, but use precaution because they're located next to residential uses. In this case, this is the C1 zone, which is our local business district. It's intended for a mixture of different goods and services. The general plan designation here is commercial residential, and that's specific to the area of Newport Boulevard between 19th Street and Mesa. It allows both residential and commercial uses. It's envisioned to provide one or the other. It's not a mixed-use district. However, because this site was developed so long ago, the residential use is allowed to continue as a non-conforming use.
All right, thank you, Ms. Halligan. I think that's it for me. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Halligan. I really do appreciate it. I will now open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up. And if you would, sir, please state your name for the record. Let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and if you agree to them.
My name's Sean Maddox. I'm here on behalf of Ashen Lex LLC. I have read the staff report and conditions of approval and do accept them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maddox. The floor is yours.
Again, Sean Maddox. I'm here on behalf of Ashen Lex LLC, DBA Gaia Wellness, the proposed location at 2424 Newport Boulevard. The proposed cannabis retailer, I think just to speak to the specificity of the retailer as it's been a point of communication on businesses in the past couple of commission hearings. This is envisioned as a health and wellness facility. I think you hear that a lot in cannabis, but the other emphasis here is going to be somewhat of a farm-to-table model, so an emphasis on local buying. The operator has a white labeling agreement and partnership with Seven Leaf, who's one of the owners of this location, who has multiple vendors that are serviced out of the Measure X area in Costa Mesa. He also has relationships with Yumi Karma, Mona Brand, Puffweiser, all of which are local operators and vendors. There's also relationships with local cultivators in Santa Ana, and the idea here is to source locally to be able to provide something almost like a farmer's market where you're getting fresh product that hasn't been sitting on shelves, that isn't coming from, you know, stizzy and every brand that you see in the industry that is everywhere else. So it's somewhat of a unique local bent on cannabis that I don't think has really been seen, so hopefully there's a competitive advantage there. I don't know for sure. With respect to the owner's experience, he's got licenses in Los Angeles for a Type N. And then his Costa Mesa partner, Seven Leaf, has a Type 6 manufacturing and distribution. The owner also has a retail store in Corona set to open within the next 30 days. Hopefully, these Costa Mesa location could open within the next 12 months, and the proposed operations would include retail storefront and not delivery. Next slide, please. Previous slide, please. Previous, one more. There we go. This is the site plan, as you saw in Michelle's report. Thanks, Michelle, again for the report. 2424 Newport Boulevard. The location is interesting, to say the least. It shares a driveway with the adjacent property, so there's an easement on that drive aisle. It shares a driveway with the adjacent property, so there's an easement on that drive aisle. And then there is an existing non-conforming residential use in the back. Applicant did have outreach with those residential tenants, and we'll discuss that later in the presentation. But as laid out, it's existing non-conforming with respect to parking and the overall use. As you can see on the site plan, there's proposed improvements on landscaping on Newport Boulevard, as well as a change to the current parking layout, which was non-conforming and had two or three parking stalls on the Newport Boulevard side of things. Overall, there's 12 onsite stalls for retail plus one bike rack, and there's going to be eight offsite parking spots at 2428 reserved for employees. Next slide, please. Here you'll see the floor plan of the proposed use. The entrance and exit for customers is in the northeastern corner of the lot, adjacent to Newport Boulevard. Customers would come into the lobby, go through age verification and into the display area, and then exit through the lobby as well. This area is furthest away from any of the residents in the rear. All of the facility will be under video surveillance 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In addition to the front of house, which was highlighted in Michelle's presentation, there's also back of house, which includes a break area, office, vault, storage, and fulfillment room. Next slide, please. Again, speaking to the leadership team and ownership experience, Andy Singh is a, I guess, local business owner. He's got an office in Costa Mesa on Bristol. He's the owner of Nevada. Nevada's been working with Seven Leaf for years now on their product fulfillment as part of the proprietary manufactured blends that they bring to market. This kind of goes into the health and wellness model that was discussed earlier. Nevada creates specific tinctures and blends that are curated to target certain health benefits or seek benefits from the cannabis plant. In addition to that, Damon Puya is the owner of Seven Leaf. Seven Leaf has multiple products that they bring to market and white labeling service for clients. That includes full-spectrum oils, vapes, flour, and really almost any manufactured cannabis product. Lastly, as part of the leadership team, Sean Maddox, Chief Compliance Officer, I'll be working with the owner to ensure that the proposed use meets all of the conditions of approval and maintains compliant operations on the site. Again, worth noting, the owner does have an office down the street on Bristol Avenue. He's also an Orange County resident, and he will be the Community Relations Officer. So in terms of outreach, he's been on top of it from day one. And then he'll also be available to neighbors, residents, and anybody else if there are any concerns that arise out of the activity. Next slide, please. I think most importantly, in some of the commissioners' questions hinted at this, neighborhood compatibility and overall compatibility of the site with respect to the non-conforming residential outback. This all comes down to a lot of the conditions of approval that were put on by staff, but also, I think, proactive efforts on behalf of the applicant. City requires odor control mechanisms. Typical odor control includes negative pressurized HVAC systems. Applicant goes above and beyond that by having MERV 13 filters, industry standards MERV 8. Really, the difference is the amount of particulate matter that gets filtered by those, so it is a higher degree, more expensive, but ensures that there's no odor around the facility. Odor control mechanisms also include, you know, daily inspection by staff. There's a fun thing called an olfactometer that can be used to sense smell, so they'll be employing that to ensure that there's no smell in the surrounding area. Community outreach thus far. Two sets of mailers have been sent out, both in early January and early February. Those were sent out in both English and Spanish. The second mailer included an open house onsite, of which no neighbors showed up to. Additional community outreach stems back to late summer, early fall, when applicant thought that this was progressing to the CUP stage. He did reach out to the landlord and the broker in order to broker some discussions with the current residents out back. Discussions were had and letters of support were gained. I'll talk about those in a minute on the last slide. And then just more neighborhood compatibility efforts. I think security is extremely important, and I think this goes into the residents out back and ensuring that this is a safe site. The site proposes two part-time and two full-time guards, two guards during hours of operation, one full-time guard as required by the conditions of approval. There'll be a 24-hour guard. Guards have three separate shifts. Guards are never on a shift more than eight hours, just to ensure safety. Their stations will be at the entrance, the retail store, or retail floor, as well as roving and exterior sweeps. Surveillance will take place around the facility, not just within the proposed premises. This includes indoor and outdoor closed-circuit TV cameras. Indoor will have facial recognition capability. Outdoor has both facial recognition as well as license plate readers, and this will canvass the entirety of the parking lot. The site also includes ceiling and wall-mounted motion detection units, as well as an uninterruptible power supply to ensure that video monitoring continues uninterrupted in the case of a power outage. Lastly, card readers and secure access. All of the site is considered restricted access. Of course, retail is open to customers, but they have to be let in through the lobby. Any area that is restricted access requires RFID clearance. RFID badges are given to employees with differing access levels. So for instance, a cannabis specialist who's operating on the floor usually would not have access to inventory vaults or storage rooms in the back of house. Those cards are all being employee-specific, give us up-to-date reports on who accessed what rooms at what times in order to look into diversion or any matters related to that. Lastly, and just to wrap up on, last slide, please. Community outreach. Again, I think in picking this site, it was always known that the adjacent non-conforming residential could be an issue. Outreach started early with those neighbors in order to ensure comfortability with the proposed use. I think one of the biggest vows of support that we got was there was a legal shop at 2428 previously that brought a lot of concerns and issues to the neighbors. So them understanding what's required of a legal operator in terms of surveillance, security, and all of those things, I think gave them a lot of, I guess, peace, will you say, with the operation coming in and the proposed use. We did get letters of support from all of those tenants. In addition to the letter of, or one of those letters of support that's included on this slide, I've also included the cover letter of the mailer, as well as one of the pages of the FAQ that was mailed out to all surrounding neighbors within 500 feet of the facility. Mr. Singh is here tonight. If you have questions of him or I, we are happy to discuss anything that commissioners may post. That's it.
Mr. Maddox, thank you so much. I think I've said it before. I appreciate your presentations. They're always very thorough and in-depth. So thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Maddox, starting with Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maddox. It's really not fair. You've been here so often that you're able to anticipate the questions that we've had before. I think you're working off a checklist or something. Appreciate the MERV filter comment. But I do have a couple of questions for you. On page five of your presentation, which had the picture of the landscaping, having been out there today, I'm aware there's a monument sign, so as people drive up, they'll see that. What I wonder about with the landscaping is whether you have any concern about potential customers not seeing your sign on the building itself? Kind of where the massage business sign is quite visible today, that tree and that, whatever planting that is.
It's a valid concern. I think the monument sign, if allowed, will still be there, so that will provide some conveyance. Most customers who'd be coming to the location would know about it, regardless of the exterior signage. And I think in addition to that, the landscaping is an added improvement. So if it obscures our business, that's to our detriment and hopefully to the community's benefit.
So you've heard comments probably tonight and in previous meetings where people have wondered about market saturation. And you've been here representing a lot of businesses, so I think you have a unique perspective on this topic. And so my first question is, do you see a problem with oversaturation? And is there a number that's too many of cannabis businesses in this city?
Once all of my clients are approved, after that, it's too many. I'm totally kidding, no, and I will give a legitimate response to that. I think we heard earlier from the owner of South Coast Safe Access, and one of his points was the majority of the business for those locations in Santa Ana come from the surrounding communities. As of now, there really is not many jurisdictions outside of Santa Ana that have approved cannabis. So I understand Costa Mesa's serving a smaller population. It's really serving a much broader population, given the lack of access throughout Orange County. It's tough to say. I've seen open markets. I've seen competitive markets. I think, you know, there's something to be said about the open-market approach. I've got clients that are out in Palm Springs, which I think is a really good analog for this open-market approach. There's open licensing there. There is what I call a soft buffer, where you've got inner-business buffers or population density out there. I think it's three per thousand-foot radius or something of that matter. We've seen a saturation point out there, so that while it's still open, you're really hovering around, I think, 18 to 25 businesses is where they've kind of hit out there. And it's a pretty small population, but similarly serves a lot of the greater desert communities. It's hard, because we saw a woman earlier today whose dream is to open a storefront and do this the right way. I'm paid by people to put together competitive applications and win licenses in limited jurisdictions that might only have two to five licenses. And while it's earned me a career, and I appreciate that, there's also this monopolistic side to that, where, look, if you've got five, 10 stores, you're the only guys that are going to win this. You're the only ones who have the industry experience. And it doesn't give an opportunity for, I think, the up-and-coming operators, who might be really good operators, who might have a passion for the community and the industry, and who might have something to offer. So very legal. I'm torn on it, right? It's a legal response, but I think at the end of the day, there's pros and cons. I do think that the city, even if it never had a cap, would meet a saturation point. It's my understanding that they've closed the licensing period now, and we've already seen a detraction of multiples. In my estimation, I think that the saturation point in this city will probably be somewhere between low 20s to mid 30s of operators. And what we've seen in other cities where they hit those numbers is these things start to go through this revolving roulette of sales, right? So they're limited entitlements because there has now been kind of a, we're not accepting new ones. And the ones that aren't doing well will then, you know, source the secondary market and try to sell these things. So, well, again, I don't think that I have a number for what is the number. I do think that the city will probably saturate out around mid 30s.
I appreciate your candor, and I appreciate your expertise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Rojas.
First of all, thank you very much for that answer, because that's kind of along the lines of where we were going in my mindset here. We just wanted to kind of have an idea of it. But I just wanted to say thank you again very much for your professionalism, your thoroughness on your presentations. It's always been very eye-opening to listen to you guys present, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Tabor? If we could put the mic down a little bit, everyone, too. Thanks.
Andy, are you going to talk? Are you standing here? So Andy rents the office from me. And you might recognize Andy that he tried to buy a building that I own and opened a cannabis place, and it got voted no. Andy didn't tell me he was coming in or applying for anything. And so I don't feel like I'm, you know, predisposed to vote either way based on that. But you can tell me what you want to do about that.
Director Dropkin.
Yeah, the Commissioner Tabor, I spoke to him earlier, and he did mention that he doesn't have an unbiased feeling towards him renting the property in any way to bias his decision, so.
Good enough for me. We're all aces, so ask away.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that on the record, that we know each other. I don't know if we were just trying to be on the up and up and not mention to me that you're coming in, but... Oh, cool. So just so you know, I know Andy.
Is that all, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Maddox, for your presentation and for, I think, your honest response to Commissioner Zick's comment. I've had discussions myself with industry professionals like yourself who have given as low as 15 or 20. So, you know, 25, low, late, high 20s, low 30s, you know, that, all of that ballpark is kind of in the same area, you know? I haven't heard anybody say 40, 50, or, you know, much less 60, which is the total number of applications. And, you know, so it is an interesting point you made. And I guess the idea is the better operators will be the ones left standing once everything is said and done. But now to my question. So I was wondering, how did you go about reaching out to the five, to the occupants of the five residential units? Was that knocking on doors? Was that mailers?
It was through the landlord, requesting their information and reaching out accordingly, trying not to be, I think, too upfront and knock on somebody's residence way far out in front of the hearing. So we reached out through the landlord.
Okay. Can you confirm, Mr. Maddox, that you are an agent of Ash &amp; Lex LLC?
I can.
I did some research on the corporation, and it seems that the corporation was incorporated on November 26th of 2019. And the address is for 2424 Newport Boulevard Suites C&amp;F. And based on what we've heard tonight, that was while those two units were still occupied. So I was just wondering what the reasoning was there.
So there was a discussion with the landlord early on. I think both of those tenants were on month-to-month, and there was no long-term plans for renewal. I know as part of their, I think, the dog groomer's vacation, when they left, there was an agreed-upon assistance in relocation, preferably in Costa Mesa. I think they eventually ended up in Newport Beach. So it was really, the property had been targeted for the proposed use. Communication was had with the tenants, and I think everything was handled graciously and professionally to that end.
So did Ash &amp; Lex, or the landlord, or both, provide assistance then to the both, to the two occupants of those units?
I can speak to the dog groomer. I cannot speak to the massage spa. But I know that communication was had prior to entering into any letter of intent or engagement. There was no lease. It was one of those, you know, perfect storms that there was a tenant that was on month-to-month. They had planned on probably moving eventually, which both of them moved prior to our occupancy. It wasn't a, "We're forcing you out. We've gotten approval. Please leave." It was, I think, really an organic situation and gave an opportunity for them to leave and find a new location that was beneficial for their businesses.
So the incorporation of the, of Ash &amp; Lex LLC was, I'm guessing that was incorporated after discussions with the landlord on, "Hey, we want to partner up," right?
I actually think that Ash &amp; Lex is a repurposed entity. I think it was formed way before discussions were had at this location. Just knowing my history with the operator and the entity. But yes, the discussions of the site, so if you look up corporate paperwork, there's articles of incorporation, which actually do not show a location for a business. And then there's subsequent statements of information. The subsequent statement of information would then identify a property. So I would assume that any statement of information that's been filed in the past, however long we've been going through this process in Costa Mesa, does have 2424 listed as a place of eventual business or contact. But I do not think that it was on the articles of incorporation, and I do not think that this business was incorporated in 2019 with the intention of coming into 2424.
Okay, thank you. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Who else? I have no questions either. Mr. Maddox, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And welcome, Mr. Singh. You're welcome to come up and say anything that you'd like as well.
Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to get connected again on better circumstances. It's nice to get connected again on better circumstances when it's not a lot of people here, so I just want to express my gratitude to all of you, and I genuinely mean that. I've always been ecstatic to be an operator in Costa Mesa, and although my first project didn't go as I expected, it didn't discourage me, it motivated me even more to continue to persevere and hopefully achieve this objective to being a long-lasting, feasible operator for the city of Costa Mesa. While I'm here, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that any of you may have. Commissioner Tabor, if you have anything you want to ask.
I will ask, I think this is probably part of all applications, but it seemed to have come up more in other applications, kind of mailing out things to the community around the proposed location and letting folks know. I guess sometimes I am a little bit surprised that nobody shows up to, in favor or against or whatever, maybe that's down the road or something, but was all that handled, that people were notified?
Yes, there was a 500-foot notification that included property owners and residents.
Cool.
And I do want to say, like, the biggest thing for me was really interacting with those residents in the back. So prior to getting their letter of support, which the landlord and broker wanted to take the initiative for that, I personally reached out with the approval from the landlord, and I connected with a very nice lady. There was an onsite manager named Ken, and to my surprise, there were no concerns or reluctancees. In fact, Ken chuckled and said, well, when the illegal shop was here, I didn't really have an issue then, too. So I thought I'd share that. I was proactive, and, you know, I did reach out myself personally, door-to-door, so thank you.
Was it all Commissioner Tabor? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar, did you have a question?
Just, yeah, Mr. Singh, thank you for your
Sorry.
...your being back here, and appreciate your willingness to engage with the neighbors. So it's a sign of a good operator. Based on the way that Mr. Maddox answered my question about the incorporation, is that, was that accurate, or is there anything you would like to add to his answer?
Yeah, not, it's pretty accurate. So instead of me filing for a new entity, you know, Sean handles various entities, and he had a clean one for me to just repurpose. So although it was incorporated in 2019, it was just an entity for this, for licensing purpose. So we essentially selected it because it was just, it was a virgin entity, so.
So kind of like a shell company of some kind?
Yeah, pretty much. Instead of just going through the whole process of filing with the Secretary of State, paying a new filing fee and managing another entity, there was a, just a virgin entity we could have repurposed.
I see. Okay. So the, the address was not 2424 Newport at the beginning, at the point of incorporation, then, is what I take on this?
Well, you, I think you mentioned it was incorporated in 2019.
Correct.
From my recollection, the licensing process to apply was in August of 2021, so I think the earliest someone would have known about the licensing process was maybe 12 months from then, which was 2020. So the entity was not opened with that, with the 2424 address.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you for clearing that up for me, I appreciate it, and that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else? All right, seen none. And thank you, Mr. Singh, Mr. Maddox, I appreciate it. I will now open the public comments. If you are in chambers and wish to speak to the item, please approach the podium. Okay, seen none. Anna, can we go to Zoom?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Telephone?
No, there's not.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing and ask Commissioners if you have any further questions of the applicant. All right, seen none. Does the applicant have any closing comments? You're welcome to speak again if you'd like, Mr. Singh, Mr. Maddox. All right, seen none. Commissioners, do you have any further questions of staff? All right, seen none. I will now close the public hearing on this item, and I will ask the Commission, you know what, before we go on to opening this up for a motion, I think this might be the appropriate time that if anyone wants to have a discussion amongst ourselves now that the, the public hearing is closed, I'll start it out with, after considering what staff have recommended for this particular item, does anyone here have any further thoughts on that? All right, seen...
Specifically?
Commissioner Vivar.
So your question is specifically to staff's presentation, correct?
Yeah, if we could, if we could limit the discussion just to what staff is recommending for this item.
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else? All right, seen none. Go ahead and ask the Commission to make a motion. Saw something pop up. Motion made by Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Rojas?
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the projects category exempt from the provisions of CEQA, Guideline Section 15301, and approve planning application 2138, subject to conditions of approval contained in the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Toller. Commissioner Rojas, would you like to speak to the item?
No, I'm good. And thank you again for your presentation and appreciate your efforts.
All right, Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Toller.
Same thing. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioners, do you wish to speak to the item? Speak to the motion? Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the, again, the applicant, well, staff, again, for the presentation and for the applicant's presentation as well, and I thank you both for bearing with me on my questions. I think very early on, I had made comments about noticing not being in Spanish, so I am glad to hear, I'm glad to see that the applicants have taken that into consideration and are doing that, so I appreciate that. And in regards to the questions as well about incorporation, I know this is outside the purview of the Planning Commission as the measure, as Measure Q was written, but I have expressed concerns about the targeting of occupied units for business, any kind of business, really well-funded business, but I do appreciate when operators do go, again, above and beyond what's required from staff or the Measure Q ordinance itself on helping to provide assistance to sort of businesses that are occupying them and making sure that they don't have sort of detrimental impacts to them, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Anyone else? All right, and I will finish by saying that I will be supporting the motion this evening. I will echo Commissioner Vivar to the applicants in saying that I appreciate the tough line of questioning on a couple of different fronts. I think, to add to what Commissioner Vivar said, I do believe that asking questions like these in terms of articles of incorporation are within our purview. I think it's just part of the regular process to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, right? So I think that's a very astute observation among a range of observations that this board makes on a fairly regular basis, but I do appreciate you, you know, spending the time up here answering the questions. I think it's a good, a good project. I think that the findings can be made to support this, and I think it's, it's robust enough to say that, yes, the burden of evidence is there, and that should anything else come up, there is a backstop there in the 50-plus conditions of approval that are tied into it as well, so there is a backstop for the community in case anyone wants to know. So with that said, if any other Commissioners wish to speak, you're certainly welcome to. All right, seen none. Anna, if we can call the question, please.
That motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner Andrade absent and Commissioner Tabor abstaining.
Okay, thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, Mr. Singh, and welcome to Costa Mesa. Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to old business, and there is no old business or new business, and we'll now move on to departmental reports, starting with our famous Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, honorable members of the Planning Commission. I'll first start off with the first Public Works announcement will be in the form of responding to Commissioner Vivar's request about West 19th Street improvements. That project is a part of West 19th, Placentia Avenue, and East 17th Street, and, which was approved by City Council during the January 17th City Council meeting. So everything in terms of the prerequisites have been satisfied, so staff is on board to start the preconstruction meeting for that project, and construction is slated to begin sometime to mid to late May. So in addition to that, the work on West 19th Street is from Sundance Drive to Park Avenue, with the newly Class II bike lanes being from Whittier Avenue to Pomona Avenue, which will all be consistent with the city's active transportation plan. So before that begins, the traffic signal at Wallace and 19th will begin first, and that will be a part of another project, which is the citywide traffic signal and hawk signal project, and we plan to install, in conjunction with that, hawk signals in front of Lyons Park and Wilson Park as well. So in order to be efficient in our operations, we'll first do the traffic signal, that, too, is sometime to mid to late May. In conjunction, we'll do Placentia Avenue in terms of the paving, and as you recall, members of the Active Transportation Committee were, were part of the field audit, in which we incorporate a lot of the recommendations made by that commission in terms of planting new trees and parkway repair along Placentia Avenue. So Public Works is excited about that. We're excited about the community and doing these great projects in order to make active transportation alive and well here in the city of Costa Mesa. So that's my first update. So second update I'd like to announce is that tomorrow on April 11th is the City Council Study Session. Public Works staff will be giving a presentation on the fiscal year 2023/24 Capital Improvement Program budget. Study session will begin at 5:00 PM, and everyone is welcome to join either personally in the City Council chambers or via Zoom, and anyone who's interested can find the directions on how to join via Zoom through the city's website. And lastly, I'd like to mention the Residential Parking Online Community Meeting, scheduled for this Wednesday, April 19th, and it's going to be through Zoom, and you can find out information about that through the city's website, and you can join via Zoom or call in. Information, as I mentioned before, can be found on the city's website by just going through the search option, and you should be able to find it immediately. So it's going to be a three-phase discussion. Essentially, it's going to be rolled out, the Resident Parking Permit Program, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, and more information will be detailed during the online community meeting. So that's it for my announcements, and I defer back to the Chair. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Yang. It's incredible you leave us in a consistent state of asking the question, what doesn't Public Works do? It really is impressive. So thank you, Mr. Yang. Moving on to Development Services Director Drapkin.
Nothing tonight.
Really? Okay. So I think, I just wanted to point out real quick and just say a quick thank you that we got our pen and our pin tonight. Our official pen and our official pin, okay? So thank you very much for doing that. That was a nice treat, Director Drapkin. Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Preziosi, our city attorney.
No report this evening, Chair.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening. And with that, I will now adjourn the meeting to April 24th, 2023. Thank you for joining us this evening. Have a good night.